Hearing that, I entertain a motion to adopt it as the agenda is printed.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, have support. Any other discussion? All those in favor, you signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the minutes of the November 8, 2002 regular meeting, I understand those were emailed out?
I can go, print some copies off real quick if you'd like, I'm not sure what happened. My apologies.
Okay, so we'll just take care of that near the end. Public comment, is there anything other than what is on the agenda that we need, that needs to be brought forward to us tonight? You're on the agenda.
Aye, sorry, I don't have.
Alright. Okay, next order, business, business item, we have a public hearing on the Bradford rezoning. So Mr. Bradford is present, would you like to come up and just kind of give us a little ideas to what you're requesting, open there?
Jason Bradford, 11910 Sparta Avenue, and I purchased a property, oh probably eight years ago or so, and it was zoned commercial, it used to have a hardware store around it, and we recently have reskinned all the buildings there and half of it had to get rebuilt, and when I was doing that, that's when, you know, I talked to Kevin about it not being zoned right for what it is and, you know, it didn't conform, it was already out of compliance, I think, to begin with, and so that's when we started looking at what we needed to do to make it right, so. Yes, yep, yep, so. Yeah, so that's kind of where we're. Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at, we're. You know, mostly done with the steel work on it and. I had to apologize to Kevin because I didn't mean for it to be something out of compliance, especially for a township member. It didn't look good, but yeah, it just started off as a project to redo what was there and. You know, over the years, it used to have, uh, like four accessory buildings to it. And I had taken down two of them, and so this one was kind of. You know. Just simplifying what the footprint there was. I don't know if you guys have any other questions there.
Just because we're getting an update on another. Similar circumstance somewhat, did you be being commercial, did you full prevent on that?
No, no.
Handle that at this point, if it was commercial.
So this is where, uh, for Mr. Bradford, the property is dual zoned. He's using it for agricultural purposes.
Dual zone.
Yep, so the the front portion of the property is, um, um, ag one. And then there's a back portion that was zoned commercial, so it's an agricultural building and a commercially zoned district.
Um, yeah, that was the reason for changing that over was, you know, the ag one is all, you know, around it, and so. You know, we, well, I said, well, I don't care if that's on the ag property because that's all we're using it for anyway, so.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it makes total sense.
Yeah.
Just thinking about.
But you weren't, you weren't operating as commercial.
No, no, we're just using it correct.
Open up the public hearing, if there's anyone that'd like to speak. Uh, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. And address the, uh. Commission here. See any hands? So we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, I keep forgetting about that. Okay, uh. And, uh, anything up here, Tim, did you have anything more?
No, I mean, it's a little different circumstance because it's going from commercial to ag one. If we prove it.
Yeah, well, it's more of a clarification, I understand, because it was new, instead of the goal.
Yeah, so a portion of the properties is on commercial, so this is just make sure that whole property.
Okay.
Back to egg.
Yep.
Yes, it is unusual to build. One back.
Right, yeah. Barb?
No, I think it's pretty clear.
I'm good.
I think I can be.
Okay. Say hi.
Hi.
Oh, I'm good. And, yeah, I'm good.
Anything from our plan or anything additional, I think you spelled it out pretty good in. Uh, presentation that you gave us.
No, I'm, I'm happy to. Um, kind of reiterate it with some memo, but otherwise this is a fairly straightforward resoning from my perspective.
Well, the property around it is a. So it's not like we're. Looking to. Mix uses in the area. Okay. Well, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning. For Mr. Bradford.
Recommend, recommend.
Recommend. Yes, sorry, recommend.
I'll support that.
Can we have a motion to recommend the rezoning as requested? Properly supported, any other discussion? Hearing done, call for the mo- uh, roll call, please.
Yes. She, she can't.
She can't.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Barb.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes. Should, uh, minutes probably shouldn't be flat that, uh. Linda recused herself, okay. Motion carried. I'll say.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I want to say thanks to Kevin too for. What I thought was very complicated and making it simple for me.
Very good.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, I have a children's thing to give.
Okay, uh, new business, uh, first order is the floodplain ordinance amendments.
Yeah, for tonight, I don't have any documents to bring forward to the planning commission, uh, just really wanted to make sure that you all. We're all aware. That, uh, FEMA is in the process of updating their flood maps, and as a part of that process, they're requiring different municipalities to update their ordinances. To continue to stay a part of that floodplain program, so. Township is no longer a part of the program, becomes very difficult and very costly for residents to get flood insurance. So FEMA says we're updating the maps, advancing the program, getting these updates made by February twenty. Third. Or twenty eighth, I can't remember, um. So I've been working with, uh, a gentleman from the state of Michigan that's working on that program. Um, he brought some edits to the floodplain provisions. Uh, so that's what next month we'll bring back for a public hearing. There'll be some minor edits, some definitions and a couple other pieces that FEMA is requiring. Um, one other piece that we're working on is taking the floodplain provisions. Out of the zoning ordinance and making its own separate ordinance. Um, that way in the future, it'll help just really make that process a lot easier, so. Instead of having to update his owning ordinance, um, people can say make these changes. And it makes it a lot easier to adopt those changes, um, for the township in the future, so. Townships can can say no to those changes, but the result is then. No floodplain program, so. Um, I'll be working with Marcy in the township to get that scheduled for the next. Planning commission meetings for public hearing. And then hopefully get that approved in January and then the board in February. So we can meet those deadlines.
Any question? Okay, sorry, update. Alright, next order of business, sign ordinance language, again, Kevin, you wanna? Walk us through this.
Yeah, um, so. You know, from my understanding that, you know, with the township, we recently went through the certification process. Um, whether there are different updates, um, to different portions of the ordinance. Um, I reviewed a couple of different things, uh, supervisor Bergman. Um, when we looked at the the sign ordinance language. There are some changes that were made. Uh, the brief overview, it looks like a lot of those changes were made. Um, to remove portions of the zoning ordinance that will, um. Put enforcement due to content assigned, which. Due to the record cases, uh, townships can no longer, um, enforced by content. However, resolve the simplest changes, it made some really restricted, um. Sign language, both in the agricultural, um, but also in the commercial zones. Um. One project was, there was a sign, um, for an agricultural storage building that under previous ordinances would have been allowed. Um, but there was a section of the old signs, um. Language that was just wholesale taken out. Um, additionally, with the commercial. Under the the old ordinance, it reads that there's this section D had been repealed. Well, however, when that ordinance is codified, section D is. Back in place. And again, it restricts. Really restricts what's allowed within the commercial district. Um. So I've got an application pending right now that. Because the way the ordinance is written. They can't build the sign they want. Um, so they're looking to either seek a variance or to understand if the townships. Looking to, um, amend the sign ordinance language. So. I say all that in hopes of, of getting some guidance from the planning commission on, on whether or not you'd be open to. Um, looking at. The current sign ordinance language and be open to revisions. Make it. Um. Trying to find some neutral words, but maybe make it more balanced between. Um, not being content focused, but allowing folks to what may have been. Allowed before.
So the pages that are in our packet here are the current zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yeah, there should be two pages, there is, um.
Seven thirteen or fourteen?
So seven fourteen, let's see.
If you keep going. There's one that says signs, but, uh, keep going.
It's a sign.
And I'm realizing that when I. Name these electronically, it doesn't necessarily flesh out in the printed off version, so I'll be more thoughtful of that in the future.
There.
Yeah, so seven thirteen, if it's got a page number on the bottom, that's the old sign ordinance. Following the old sign orange is all the new provisions.
Oh, okay.
So everything in here is new?
So from this point forward for the science portion, this is all the new language regarding signs. The two major changes are, there's a removal of a lot of language from the agricultural that was very specific to farm markets. Um, and other types of structures that would have been. Considered to be content based, um, enforcement. And then within the commercial standards, it was. Uh, subsection D was put back in place. When it had previously been repealed, so.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, what did you say about page seven thirteen, that's the old ordinance?
Yeah, if it's got a page number, um.
If it's got a page number, oh.
That's the old.
I got it.
Seven eighteen.
I don't.
The next page is.
Well, some thirteen, true.
So just in the future, that little explanation you just gave us now, would have been nice, even though I missed the email. Would have been nice to have a little write-up on the front of the package, because to be honest with you, I read through both of them, I'm like, okay, what am I looking at? Signs and what?
And that's where I go back and forth on what's different, what's new. And I apologize, typically we would try to do that, um. I wanted to try to get something just knowing that there was an applicant. That, you know, depending on the outcome of tonight. Would want to see the variance, um. So. Tried to do something in a rush, like. Normally we should have put some more in there to be descriptive.
The changes in the ordinance, Governor, then really due to commercial signage and. Ag sign?
Yes, yep, there is. In the old ordinance under agricultural. Residential and agricultural. Um, there's a lot of language. I believe. The new ordinance only has subsection one and two still included, everything else was removed. Um. Before certain signs would have been, larger signs would have been allowed. However, those. From what I. What I'm assuming is those provisions were removed because they were content based. And. When that was removed wholesale, it really limits signs within the residential and agricultural zones. To, uh, I believe it's thirty two square feet and no larger. Um, so rather small sign. Um, but that's the intent, and that was already discussed by the planning commission, I don't want to have to revisit those things. Um.
So what are you looking for tonight, Captain? Well, we won't approve this tonight, but.
No. Just really get some guidance. Because I wasn't a part of the certification process, I didn't know if you guys have had a really thorough conversation around signs? Or if this is something that you would be open to. Re- revisiting and possibly remending.
Does everybody feel that way? We should need to, yeah, maybe dive into this now, or not now, but I mean. In their future here. Yes. We'll proceed then with reviewing this. More information, maybe, uh, say you can give us some. Your views on it.
I'll make sure that for when it comes back to the planning commission, there's a more thorough memo with highlights on different things that have changed.
That, that would be extremely helpful, there's a lot here.
Yeah. So how is that gonna help the individual that wants to. That at least gives them some guidance that. You know. I come to the planning commission today and y'all had said, no, we don't want to change it. Then I think they'd wholeheartedly seek the variance. However, now that they know the client conditions open. Could be. They can see with their client on whether or not they want to wait to see how that turns out or if they still want to seek the variance.
I'm not sure. Who was involved, and that was some time ago, Dale, that we put this together, so I mean, I don't, I think we've got several new members here that. Were part of that discussion.
No, it was definitely before us.
And, you know, I think when we put it together originally. You know, we, we, we wanted to get something going. Put it that way. And then. As you work through it, you kind of tweak it. Okay, good. Alright, whole business amendments to allow wineries, microbreweries and distilleries. Uh, agriculture support services in the ads, so, uh, again, this was something that, uh. We've gone through and then it went up to the, uh. To the township board, they sent it back, we. Had a look at it and could think what you put together today reflects our. That was our. Ideas of how to change it to correct those issues.
Sure, I hope I did a good job, I hope we did a good job, so.
Want to briefly go through your summary and then I'll go from there.
Uh, so. Like you just stated, this had gone to the board, there were some revisions that need to be completed, um. You know, we took some more time with the ordinance, um, so. You'll see some changes both in the structure and the content. A lot of the content is going to be the same, we've just structured the ordinance different. Um, in a way that we believe would be more consistent with the existing structure of the zoning ordinance, so. Um, for setbacks and things like that, they go to, um, appendix B where all the other setbacks and things, so that's. Why you'll see a drastic change of the ordinance, um, in terms of content. Um, it was really copy and paste to what already existed. Um, the changes that were made, um. Were around the sixty, um, thousand barrels per year, um. And that was came from a conversation with Dale, as he had been able to do some more looking. Um, the a thousand barrels per year is limited by the state of Michigan. Um. A thousand barrels per year of microbrewery can self-distribute, so hopefully keeps that intent of keeping. Um, wineries, microbreweries and distilleries small within Sparta Township. Um. The other place is we revised, uh, winery, microbrewery and distilleries. Um, from a permitted juice and agricultural, primary agriculture to a special use. And then the last one, um. The last piece was that, you know, there was a discussion at the last meeting whether or not to. Permit them in, uh, to, um, the commission said no. So we, we kept that language the same. Coming out of that, there were a few questions. Uh, we wanted to bring to the commission's attention. Uh, whether or not the thousand barrels per year, um, did match your intent, you wanted to keep that number, um. Uh, seeking some clarification on, there's language that says they primarily sells products produced on site. Um. You know, we can keep that way, I just want to make sure we're carrying out the, the commissions and the townships intent when we do the enforcement. Um. You know, if you wanted to put a percentage on that to really define what primarily means. Um, or if you wanted to leave it at primarily. And then the last piece was around, um, there's language around what types of food can be sold. Right now, the way that we'd interpret it would be. It's a really, really, really limited, you know, wine. Uh, beer, spirits can be sold in a tasting room only, with very limited food options traditionally. Um. If the, the commission. Had the intent to be able for wineries, microbreweries and distilleries to provide a larger menu, um, and possibly restaurant style operations. We want to make sure that that intent carries through clearly so that there's no issues moving into the future. Yeah, hopefully summarizes everything.
If you had a chance to look at. What was sent us? Comments relative to. Yeah?
No, I think primarily is primarily. And I don't think you can say primarily produced, then drop it to thirty percent.
Yeah, I was just.
I agree, just leave it as it is. Without a percentage.
Moving down this way.
I just remember there was quite a bit of discussion about that sixty thousand barrels.
Yeah, that's like everybody got.
Yeah. It's just a good weekend with that. And I'm glad Dale, you kind of clarified that maybe a point of distinction.
Yeah, like I said, because that originally sixty thousand came from simply that which they required or the, the limit on the licensing.
Right.
And I didn't think any further about it until it was brought up by the, by the board. And honestly, even me thinking about it, particularly the girls. So the thousand barrels a year. Well, then, as I was looking further into licensing requirements and, and what you're capable or not capable of doing within that license. A thousand barrels per year where the cutoff is. You go from self distribution to where you have to then go to the distributor to distribute the products. So that's where I recommended the product a thousand barrels. Okay, that's a pretty good cut point there. And you know, from there, thinking about it from an infrastructure standpoint, if you get above a thousand barrels of beer a year manufacturing. You're going to want to be in the, in the. In a public sewer and water system, right? Right? So I think it all kind of aligns in my mind. Um, I want everyone's input, obviously.
We've had some experience and so, I mean, I appreciate getting help with that, yeah. Hey Dale, talk to us, can you talk to us a little bit about the food element or? Because to me produce primarily if it produced on site, if you're growing it on site, I guess it's somewhat produced on the site. How are you doing that now?
How are we cooking it?
No, how, no, how are you? Yeah, I'm sure with heat, but.
No, I mean, we're currently using, I mean, primarily the products that we use for our food service come from Gordon Foods.
Yeah.
Right? Um, we're one hundred percent certified through the health department and all that. So all of our products are purchased there, we're bringing them in, obviously make the food and tell it from there. Um, you know, when we first started this, about back in two thousand fifteen. And somewhere in that neighborhood, there wasn't a whole lot of thought put into food service for the operation. And quite honestly, the whole industry has developed to where you're seeing wineries now, but most of them moving towards food service part of the. Leg of the operation. You just say it makes sense, B, it's another revenue stream that helps us support it. So the language that was originally written with the intent in mind, there wasn't going to be any food other than maybe shaker or cheese plates. So that's, I think, where the, the language never got updated or adapted to what our current situation is. Um, when we first started talking about this again, I actually talked with Dale and talked with Sarah. About our food service that we were headed towards at that time and said, okay, am I going to be in compliance here? And it wasn't anything, but it was mentioned to me. That it was considered to be an accessory use. For the current operation to enhance it, right? So in that vein, I don't think anyone had a problem. So we moved forward then and did expand and joined a full service kitchen. Therefore, the language never got updated to. Meet that, right? But the language in my mind, when I read it is, is kind of. Vague, if you will, right? Because it says limited food items to what pairs well with beer, wine and spirit. Well, I'm not sure there's anything that doesn't pair well with beer, wine and spirit. I don't make a habit out of putting wine on my cereal, but there's some wines I probably could, right? And there again, but, um, so in Kevin and I talking about it, I said, you know, we need to, I think, look at these statements. And make sure that they're. A, am I in compliance or not in compliance? And then B, if the language doesn't clearly define it, I think we should clearly define. And I guess that's kind of where it's at. Obviously, I. I'm hopeful that we would be in consideration of. Us being able to operate a restaurant style offering out of what we're doing. So I would be hopeful there that the language could be adapted to that. But that's not necessarily for a decision for me to make, right? Because I'm biased. So that's something I wanted to bring up the whole board and say, okay, let's get prepared in payment. This is what we're doing. The community seems to like it and embrace it. I don't know where that stands in the decision making process, but what is the township? And that's the biggest thing I've, my clarification.
Are you got any thoughts on that? And agree with Dale and David. Open that up a little bit. To what extent, what kind of a language would you propose, Kevin?
Yeah, that's where, you know, we really want to make sure. That we tailor the language, make sure we're carrying out the intent. I think, you know, for not thoughtful and careful, you definitely can open the door to. You always open the door to unintended consequences, but you know, by hearing the planning commissions deliberations. Um, I think it'll take us some time to make sure that, you know, we put that language right, but we want to make sure we're getting out your intent.
You looked at other ordinances? That you're familiar with as far as coming to the township that you're dealing with, this is. Just something that they've been dealing, I know, I think we have gotten a couple copies of something.
Uh, for me, working on this project, I've been dug more into restaurant style, which are already those things I didn't want to do. I didn't want to do too much work, knowing that, you know, our work ends up getting charged to the township. So that wasn't going to be consistent with where the commission wanted to go. I didn't want to do a whole bunch of research.
Quite, I think we're in agreement that we want to open it up, but I mean, short of. Putting a menu in there, how do we do it, you know? How do we?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. They're doing very similar to what we're doing, quite honestly. You know, as I looked at the Alpine Township ordinances, and I know that's their ordinance, not ours. Um, there's really no reference to it at all. So I don't know if that's the right approach either, right? But there is no reference to, I mean, their, their ordinance is pretty. Basic and cut and dry, it says, yeah, you can, you can do a winery, brewery, distillery and egg zoning district. And, you know, I mean, there's the setback rules and the size of lots and that kind of thing, but. Then from there, there really isn't any reference that I seen that relates to the. And I don't, maybe that would fall underneath farmer's market and grandfather men, right? There again, I don't know the original structure. You know, as far as the, the language that's there, like I mentioned, it's kind of. Counterdicting, if you will. Because at one point it also states whatever the liquor control commission allows is permissible. Well, there again, liquor control commission doesn't have any restrictions on. Wine, beer, spirits in conjunction with food, they just control the wine, beer and spirits. It goes back to the health department to control the. The food portion, which in our case, because we are in the egg zoning district, is M D R. It's not really the health department. So the same people that enforce our winery. Well, operation also enforces our kitchen.
My question, like, if you say like, it says, if we allow like for a restaurant style operation to be conducted and. That would expand potentially, would it be some kind of, uh? I'll say. Restrictions from the health department that they still would come in and have to, because they have to inspect your kitchen system, right?
The health department doesn't M D R does.
M D R, okay.
Yeah.
But you do have a second agency that actually is watching over the whole food safety.
Correct, okay, yeah. Yeah, because there again, because we're an ag zone operation.
Yeah.
That falls in, then into M D R. Instead of if we were in a restaurant commercial setting, it would be the, I can't call it the health department.
And changing our language, does that put you into that?
No, no, because I'm still in the.
I guess we need to come up with some language. Allow an expanded menu.
If the commission would like, um, you know, we could bring back a couple of options at the next meeting. Um, say, you know, look at Alpine Township's ordinance or some others and then presents you with at least a couple of different options. To help tailor it, but if I'm capturing the intent correctly, you're, you're open to the idea and. I think pointed towards allowing expanded food options at. As an accessory use.
Yeah.
No, so I, um, if that's what the commission would like, we're happy to do that for.
Yeah, you know, and I don't know how much language we really need in there on the restaurant. So I, I mean, I don't know, right? Because I don't think there's, anybody that I've talked to that's, that's doing a winery and a restaurant style things. There isn't definition between the two, you know? Which I think is what this was originally set out to do, was set out to say that, okay, I'll let you have a winery in the township, but we don't want to have. A restaurant tied to it. And that was where the food limiting thing was coming. And there again, I'm not so sure that the food limiting statement didn't come from us originally. Because we said, oh, we're going to want to have food item, we're going to limit. But at the same time, we wanted to have the option to have wine dinners, right? You know, right from the get go. And that's kind of how this whole thing is materialized, you know, the, the nature of the beast when we opened the first year without any kitchen. People would come in, have a drink or two, and then they're going to dinner. So our simple intent was to try to capture them and keep them there for good.
About the closest thing that I can think of in comparison to yours is down. Like the Fenville, the Paw Paw area, they're in agricultural areas. And they also serve. Food pairing, you know, so that might be an area. To check, like Fenville, Paw Paw, um.
Bering County.
Yeah, Bering County. I would check to see because they're all, the majority of their wineries, if not all of them, are in the egg. Areas, they're not in town, they're out in the egg. District, so. Something to look at.
And I'll be happy to see what I can find and bring back.
Even Leland County.
Oh.
Yeah. Um, because several of them, Leland County has seen a big transitional change. A lot of them are starting to add food service because they realized the better.
Because everybody's going back into town. After, after being at the wineries, but I'm thinking like the Red Barn, around barn rather, Red Barn, yeah, that's in Grand Rapids. Um, the Ron Barn Fenville, um.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
Yeah, and they're all in the egg area. So. Something to look at.
Well, definitely.
Yeah.
Hey, remember my, um, the overall vending units? Again, that was something that we passed on the township board. They sent it back to us with some box. They went through those. Soon those are reflected in revised one.
Yeah, um, I think, you know, coming from the board, there is definitely some concerns after further review, the planning commission. Um, I think we'll be better able to put a lot of those concerns at ease. Um, however, there have been some revisions specifically around the definition of a vendor. Um, in the previous version, there was a misspelling that hadn't been kept previously, so we corrected that. The permits will continue to expire on December the first. And that, uh, language that previously, uh, background checks were always required, um, language that changed to may be required. Otherwise, I think we've captured all of the, the board's concerns and the planning conditions directives. Those are back in front of you all tonight, so you will, um, are ready to recommend to the board.
Now, do we have to go back to a public hearing?
Um, with the wineries, microbreweries and distilleries, um, that will have to go through another public hearing. So if you'd like, we could schedule that for the next meeting. Um, just because there's such a major change, we probably committed to special use. Um, but because there's no major changes with, uh, the food trucks, that does not need to go back to public hearing.
Comments, concerns? This one was straightforward, just have you little things to tweak?
I think we could definitely recommend that it go back.
Yes, or on the motion?
I can, I, I made a motion that we now send this on to. The planning board for their approval.
Township board.
Township board, sorry.
We be them.
We be them, yeah.
I'll support the motion.
You have a motion proudly supported, any other discussion? Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Hearing on, we'll call for the motion, well, roll call. Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yeah, so, yes.
Okay. I assume that there was nobody on Zoom. He didn't know, give me a high sign there, okay? All right, the last agenda item.
Uh, we need progress report, uh, we need that.
At the last meeting, uh, Mr. Mobern spoke before the commission, the commission. Notified that you were. Struggle for the word, never need to use them, but open to the self control documents in the middle of ninety nine. Um, since then, uh, Mr. Mobern's been back in contact, he's provided, there were three things that were. Uh, still outstanding with his approvals, just a receipt of the health department's approval. The. Commission had previously waived the traffic study, so there's the light determination study, Mr. Mobern's provided a lever. From a, a traffic engineer, um, that will be brought back to the commission for, for the review. Um, the last outstanding piece, um, is the building inspections and. From my understanding, Mr. Mobern's been in contact with myself and the building inspector, um, starting to work through those things. So it was my understanding that once those items were captured, that you would work to get that, that project back on the agenda.
So you're saying we do not have the building inspectors report back yet?
No, that has not been completed yet, but Mr. Mobern has been in contact, reached enough to get that scheduled.
I have a question about that. Um, from our last meeting, we talked and I remember Chad said something about. The inspection, if I remember it right, Chad, you said. I'm willing to have the building that was built. After the original building inspected, but not the total. Building inspected, is that correct? Well, it kind of, it kind of stuck with me because I thought to myself. If you truly want to use the total combined building now. In logic, I would think that that would be something that you would have to. Open up to be saved and inspected for whatever purpose.
I think that's something. When. When and if we ever get to building inspector to come, which by the way, I don't know if anybody can help with this, but. It's been a month today and I've had no contact. I just, uh, had one email from Steve since last month. Um, last Wednesday, he wrote me and said, I can't make it, I'll get back with you and that's it. So thirty days have come and gone. And I did supply, like he said, with the, got the health department done, I got the traffic study done, but I'm just waiting patiently. To hear what our new building inspector wants to do.
That's Steve.
Yes, I think he's really busy with, he's a farmer also, so. Um, we just wanted to make sure we coordinated with my builder, John Van Werf. And Steve and me onsite. At the building to determine what exactly we have to do from here.
So you're, you're willing to basically have the whole building combined inspected at this point when Steve does come to.
Yeah, whatever they, whatever he requires, yeah.
I just, it just stuck with me a little bit after the meeting, because when you said that, I kind of thought. Well, I know because, um. We're for Will Barn and different things, even though they were older. And they still had to meet certain criteria and inspections, I believe, in order to. And they still had to meet certain criteria and inspections, I believe, in order to fulfill. Whatever that was, and I think that was under ninety nine people, is that right, Tim? You remember what the stated occupancy, there you go.
Correct.
So I think that's similar to what you're.
I would love to use them as example, that's what I've been trying to do a lot.
That's why I was trying to draw that parallel, because to your point, you got kind of referencing, referencing them and.
Yeah.
Kind of wanted to follow the same, uh. Scrutiny, if that's a good word, you know, and have the same. Because in theory, at the end of the day, you would like to be the same ninety nine understated occupancy.
Right, which will go back to, it'll condense my list down to hardly nothing. Because now we're talking open, actually, they don't even have panic bars, and they don't have all the things that were required, but I have all that anyways. What we're down to with my building is the doors, before I spend the money to put the doors in the building. I want the building inspector to tell me exactly. Threshold, you know, I have questions, and we can't do no more until he's out there, you know, and then John Van Werf's ready to install the doors. But I'm not going to put the doors and do something wrong, you know.
Sure.
I see some that have panic bars, I go to some places, they just have push bar, or you know. I think it's when there's a vestibule, you don't need panel cars, but when there's not a vestibule, you have to have them, is what I'm finding. That is a good example, though, Whipper Pool, Whip, Whipper Will, and Briar Barnes does not have any of that, the things that you guys are asking me to do. They don't have any of that.
There's, there's something else too, I think Tim helped me with that, was push bars aren't out of require.
Okay, well.
As far as the code goes, we.
Dale, do you have push bars on your building?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
It was required or mandated because of two thousand fifteen code.
Yeah.
And I had.
And my, like I say, when I do, like, I'm beating it, that hurt, my building was built in nineteen seventy six. I use existing poles, trusses, steel, concrete, everything's the same, I did add thirty two foot to the boat. So that's where, but I have no problem, I have no building inspector, I just spent all the money to have all the plans done, you know? But I do question why. You know, I'm them doors. Other two, the only, so many, like news, for example, is Amber and Briar Barnes, and they don't have any of the things. That Steve Delvama wrote, but we're, I think we're, and that's, the board's got to decide, are we starting over with? The new building inspector, is that what we're doing? And cabashon what Steve wrote in a determination and kind of starting fresh. Because Casey outsourced, Casey's never stepped foot in the building ever. He outsourced it to Steve Delvama, Steve's never ever stepped foot in my building. He looked at my blueprint, read it, sort of determination based on my blueprint. And he wrote, other than twenty four things, twenty two of the things I already have done. And I'm like, why don't we just look at the building, go, don't have to write all this stuff, don't tell me I need access signs and fire extinguishers. And my steps got to be seven eleven, that's all done. But he wrote all that and made it look like a huge list of things I need to do, when it's already done, you know? The only thing that needs to be done in my building, I have a question, is the doors, and before I put the doors on my building. I want the building inspector to come out and tell me exactly what he wants.
Sure.
I think we'll be well wrapped up. Oh, yeah, that's just a two. Right, that's a unplugged.
What was the reason, if you have heat in there, then the the doors?
Then you have to meet the energy goal, right?
And that's where the doors come in, like, even the exterior door, or the door, that's why Amber and Briar Barnes, so there again, if I take the heater out. I guess I'm done. I open my overhead doors, we have a party.
And push bars have to be on doors that are are locked, so like any of your exterior rooms that have doors on the exterior, you'd need push bars, but. The the doors that are out in the big open area, as long as they swing out. And you can just push them open, not necessarily need a push bar, but they can just swing open freely without any, that's a good advantage.
But didn't you have a door that was installed incorrectly?
All of them, yes, all of them, uh. Do that swing out, yes.
Is there any reason why Dale, we couldn't request our building inspector to make this a priority before the next meeting?
I believe that he said he'd be in the office tomorrow.
I did go last Wednesday to see him, and he wasn't in when he was supposed to be in.
Yeah, there was, something had come up.
Emailed me, so.
I don't think it's out of line to ask him to prioritize this before the next meeting, and so we can move on from this. I think that's only fair.
Yeah, I, like I say, I think it's best that we do an onsite visit now, because we've.
And perhaps even the fire chief could go, you know, along so that it's one and done.
Yeah.
Get everybody lined up, start the date, go and get it done.
And I have. I have, the fire chief already did a tour. Yep, Dan did a tour before the last meeting.
Okay.
And that's why Dan came and talked and said.
I remember he was being here, but I can't remember what he said.
He did his tour and looked at everything and.
Okay.
And. So the commission's aware, as. My understanding is some, there's your concerns with the building inspections is that when, uh, Mr. Mober first got his. Came in, he got his own permit for an agricultural building. Um, so that building was constructed without any, the remodeling was constructed without any of the required building permits, it was at a later date. The township was notified that. Doesn't really meet the criteria of a zoning or a agricultural building. So now that all the walls are finished, there's a lot of things that are buried behind walls that haven't been able to be inspected. So that's my understanding of. Some of the concerns that the current building inspector may have, and. That's my understanding of why this has become such a big issue for this project, because it was approved as an agricultural building. Modifications were made, but not developed proper permits. Now, trying to work backwards through that permitting process. I'm not sure, you know, what the current building inspector is going to expect. There's plumbing, electrical and other things that need to be signed off, that might be buried behind walls. Um, but I know there are concerns of how we permit something and inspect something that you can't see, so.
And that's. That's why I had to have an engineer draw the whole building. An existing building. And draw with HP's plans and electrical plans and all that stuff, that's. Why we went to all that. Is that correct, Tim?
Yeah, I think the key that Casey was always looking for is is that will that that licensed professional sign off? They'll be saying that it's built for his.
Uh, company out of New Angle to do it, uh, last year, and you guys have all got the prints of that.
So is that the only thing that we're waiting for is this building inspector then?
Yeah.
You said twenty two out of twenty four, I didn't know what the twenty third was.
Oh, I, well, I think, yeah, I think in that list, there was almost twenty four items that, and he never said these needed, he was just like. Writing this list of things that. Um, I'm not sure why he did that list, you know, but, uh, like I say, a lot of them things on there, like he says, your steps seem to be seven eleven. I looked, I got all mad, I'm like, that's our setup, like, you know, I think maybe he's just saying, but it looked so, we submitted to the board, I think you guys looked at like. Yeah, twenty four things I gotta do, I don't, that we're already done, you know?
We get the building inspector there, I don't want to have something else come up next month. That we either didn't, uh, look at tonight and say, Chad, you need to do these two things or something like that.
Right, I think, Kevin, and I think you're getting whittled down, don't we, that?
As far as I'm aware, from the last, all the minutes that I've read through the planning commission. Also, the three outstanding things are the health department approval, which Mr. Mober supplied. Uh, there's the building inspections we just spoke about, then there was. Um, originally, it was a traffic study that was waived to be a light determination study, and Mr. Mober supplied a, supplied a letter. Um, from a professional traffic engineer. Um, so I want to bring that.
Yeah, but even before that, we just we waived that, we talked about.
Yeah, we did, and Kevin, yeah.
Like a year ago.
Exactly, but he, I know, and that's why I still press, I kept telling you guys that it's already done. And I had to, and Kevin didn't know, but a year ago is when I put my drain filter in, a year ago when it was approved. I found the emails that Sarah was supposed to supply with that, I just found the email the other day from the traffic study, because when I left that last. Meeting in November of two thousand twenty one, you guys told me to get a letter. We agreed that night to get a letter from that board or whatever, from this, uh, senior transportation planner. He wrote a letter, I forwarded it to Sarah, and then on the twenty sixth, she wrote me back, said, oh, great. Looks great, I'll get it to the planning commission, and maybe she never did. So, but I found that, thank God, and then, uh, Kevin's got it now, so, but when I was in here last time, you guys were telling me, like, that's all done. It's done, it's been done for a year.
The only thing I can foresee is, excuse me. If they have to see certain things, they may. I hate to say this, may have to cut a hole.
Yeah, that'll be up to the. We're looking for their approval.
Yes.
Their approval has conditions on it, and.
Yeah.
Obviously, we would.
Right. So.
That's where we got into the big discussion about the fire suppression and the ninety nine occupancy and that. Tend rising that draft, or so it was like, why are we even talking about it? They already said in their report, Steve's report, he would accept that.
Oh, yeah, that right, that was in there, yeah. Which means you delete all this stuff, everything that was.
I honestly thought you were definitely taking out the heater. Turning the doors around, getting inspected.
I'm not going to touch them doors, so I have. The minute I want him to tell me exactly how he wants them, because, and I know you know, but I still got to hear it from the building inspector. I can't go switch the doors, Toronto, say, well, Tim said, you know, I want him there with John Van Werf, and. Whatever he says, John's going to do and it's going to be done, just because I'm. Kind of exhausted, you know, I really want to get it right, so. But I, I'm sure you're correct. But, uh, we probably better hear it from him, so I think it's time for the building inspector to come to my barn.
Sure.
And meet with John and Mike that built the building. And then from there, we'll be in pretty good shape. Or at least he'll be able to get back with you guys on what, what's going on, you know? So if you can help motivate me or motivate him, like, get him out there, that'd be great, and I'll keep trying, and then you'll be able to try tomorrow, right? All right, well, thank you.
Yep.
Are you able to get us copies in a minute, or? So, no, we could, we could probably deal with that.
Yeah, it's up to you, I can run upstairs, it'll probably take me ten, fifteen minutes to print them off, just.
That was the one that I.
Yeah.
I read them. But I took them too.
So let's, let's, uh, include those in the next month's. Is there any other public comment before we close this meeting?
November and next month's meeting.
Yes. None? Rejoicement?
Make the motion.
All those. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, roll call.
Merry Christmas, everybody.